Okay, we are all set. We will get ourselves going here with our work session. We're gonna start off with a presentation on the 2022 Community Survey Summary of Results from Baker Tilly. So with that, I'm gonna let you kick it off Superintendent McDowell.
Sure, thank you. So tonight, as everyone's aware, and just to remind people, because of the content and the amount of things that we're sharing tonight, we decided to, even though we don't typically record our work sessions, we are recording this and we will be recording the enrollment demographics so that people can refer back to it if they needed to do that. So with that, we know that we've, over the past few months, we've been engaging in a community survey, and so those results are back. Therefore, we have Don Lipto here tonight, who is from Baker Tilly, and is the person who has been orchestrating the community survey for Hastings Public Schools. So with that, I'll turn it over to Don, and just a reminder that you gotta hit the green button, or the long button, in order to go green.
Thank you very much. Happy to be here. Anytime I get as far south as Hastings, I'm feeling like I'm getting close to home. I grew up in Red Wing, and so when I get to the river, it feels like, it feels like home, so happy to be here. I'm gonna run through the high-level summary of the survey results that were done recently. I'll try to talk fairly quickly, but since it's a work session, feel free to interrupt me if you want me to elaborate, or you have a question. The contract for this particular engagement involved completing 400 random sample interviews. They were done in mid-March, as you can see. In terms of the length of the time on the phone, they averaged about a 14-minute interview. And to put that into some context, all the smart people who know about this stuff say you should try to limit phone interviews to roughly 14 to 16 minutes, and I think for probably obvious reasons, as you think about it, people are busy, and if they get, you know, too long on the phone, the quality of your data starts going the wrong direction. The margin of error of this particular study is plus or minus 4.9%. The easy math for you is to round that off to five, and so if you see a slide that says that 80% of the people thought the sky was blue, if you add 5% to that 80 and subtract five, there's a 95% chance that the opinion of everybody falls in that range. So that's the meaning of that margin of error. We did have demographic targets in this study, and by a demographic target, what it means is before any calls were done, we looked at the demographic characteristics of registered voters who live within the boundaries of the district. We wanted to find out how many were men, how many were women, how many were 18 to 24, how many were over 65, how many were parents, non-parents. We also looked at geography in terms of where people lived within the district, and so there were a half a dozen controls like that in the study, and the purpose of that is to make sure that when all the interviews are done, that the demographic makeup of who was interviewed closely mirrors the demographic makeup of all registered voters living within the boundaries of the school district. Those are the targets and that first bullet of what we controlled for, and we don't control for phones, but I always get asked, "How do you do these things with cellphones?", and the answer is, "You do them with cellphones." In a typical study, 40 to 60% of our interviews are done by cellphone, so that doesn't prohibit this kind of work to be done. Early in the survey, we asked people to react to the idea of renewing the operating referendum that's already in place, and we talked about the possibility of renewing that with no increase, no tax increase, and asked people how they felt about renewing that particular levy. And as you can see, with that light green at 79%, overwhelmingly strong support for doing so. And of course, when you tell people that this would be a no-tax-increase renewal, it's not surprising that the level of support would be strong. Following that initial verification that the renewal was solid, we did have a question where it was posed differently, and in this particular question, as you can see on the screen, it talked about the fact that the board might ask residents to increase local property taxes in order to generate more revenue to support teaching and learning opportunities for students. Based on what you know now, what do you think? Sometimes this is called the uninformed benchmark, and that's not because people are uninformed, but all they've heard so far is what you see on the screen, so it's kind of just an initial reaction. Not surprisingly, when the idea of increasing taxes was introduced, things changed a little bit in terms of how people responded. In this particular case, pretty much a 50-fifty mix between people said, "Yep, I can get on board with that", as compared to people who said, "No, they would not support that", with the balance being undecided. After we drew that initial reaction to a potential increase in the operating levy, there was a series of statements that were kind of facts, additional information, context, detail that people were given, and in each case, they were asked to tell us, "If you knew that the money was gonna be used in this way, would that make you more likely or less likely to be supportive?". There was one split sample question that I'll explain when we get to it, and so, once we drew that initial reaction, now we're coming back and saying, "I'm gonna tell you a little bit more about this, and for each of these, tell me if it would make you more likely or less likely to be supportive." And so this is how folks responded to that series of questions. You have the abbreviated questions over on the left, and then, when you look at the number in the bar chart, the first number that's on the gray, that's adding up people who said, "If I knew that, it would make me much more likely to support it", and it's adding it to people who said, "It would make me somewhat more likely to support it." So it's the two most positive way that people could respond. So that, is it 84? I'm stretching my eyesight, is that the top bar? So 84% of the people either said, "Knowing that would make me much more likely to support it" or "Somewhat more likely". Conversely, the percentage that you see in kind of the gold color over on the right, that's adding up the two negative categories, much, much less likely to support or somewhat less likely to support. So as you can see, just quickly eyeballing top to bottom, you're looking at 84 down to 62% in terms of support, and so certainly, overall, the District Administration did a good job of identifying things that resonated quite well with folks in terms of how a potential increase in operating levy dollars would, would be used. I mentioned the split sample. If you look down the list, you'll see a 15A and a 15B. What that means is that half of the people randomly heard the 15A question that had to do with being able to earn college credit while still in high school, and half the people randomly only heard the 15B question. Nobody heard both. The B question focused on career and technical programs, and sometimes, a split sample is used like that just to get different feedback on things that are similar to some extent but not the same, to see how people reacted to the two of them. And as you can see, both of them responded quite positively, relatively speaking, the 15A a little bit more so. Now, after, I should have mentioned on those previous questions, that when those were actually done on the phone, the computer randomly assigned the order that they were in, and that's done to make sure that, just because something is the first thing you hear, that that has no bearing on how much support or lack of support there is. It's removing the positional bias, and so all, that whole series of questions was randomized in that way. So now we've gone through that, people have heard all of those, they've reacted to them, and so now we're coming back and essentially saying, "I've told you a little bit more about this possible request to increase the operating levy. Tell me again, what do you think?". I remember at the beginning, we said it was about a half, about an equal number or equal percentage said yes or no, initially with no information really. Now, after information, it moved from that 42.7 up to 56.9. The little notation on the bottom is just reminding you that that's a statistically significant difference, or in layman's terms, it's a real difference that you can pay attention to. So on this one, if you wanna think of it as not, you know, not-so-good versus more, more-good news, it started a little bit tepid in terms of how people reacted initially, but after they got information, it had a nice movement in the right direction to that 56.9.
Just a real quick question for you. I didn't know where the best place to stick it in was, so I'm gonna ask it now. One of the things I'm curious about, and I don't know if your work in any way would cover this, but I have known in the past and seen it play out where there's no increase to the levy, but because of the way it has to be phrased on the ballot, it says, "Note, there will be an increase to your taxes". Does this, does this factor into any of the survey work you do? Because I know that's always created a point of confusion for people, where we'll say, "Hey, your taxes won't go up", but then on the ballot, it says they will, because that's the way it's required to be written, and I'm just wondering if that factors in anything that you do, if you know what I'm referring to.
Yep. We do sometimes have some questions that test that, you know, more deeply, if it's relevant to the district and something that likely is gonna play out in that way, but your observation is absolutely correct, that it is, sometimes you can have language where it will say it's not an increase, and other times, even though it's not, you're required to say it is, and in that particular case, the onus really falls on the district in a big way to communicate that, so people can understand it before they walk in and cast their ballot, so it's not kind of counterintuitive when, when the time comes to mark the ballot. So that definitely, in Minnesota, is a problem at times that can challenge communications. All right, so this next section, basically what we're looking at here is we're just breaking down the demography a little bit for you, and what you're gonna be seeing is, how did different groups respond after they got information? So we're not talking about at the beginning, we're talking about after they had that, the information, how did they respond then? And, oops, pushed the wrong button, sorry about that. All right, here we go. So the first slide is looking at parent status. Parents mean, I've got kids in the Hastings Public Schools right now. The non-parent are people who said they've never had kids in the district, and then the alumni parent are people who said, "I used to have kids in the school, but they've all graduated and, you know, moved on." So that's the distinction among parent, non-parent, alumni parent. And so this is the percentage of support, remember, after people got information. And one of the things about this one that, you know, is a little unusual, is we typically would see a little bigger variation between the parent and the other two categories, the non-parent and the alumni parent. Typically, more likely, you know, 15, 18% difference, depending on the circumstances, but this one's a little bit flatter than what we typically would see. Yes?
Would you typically see a difference between the non-parent group and the alumni parent group? I'm, personally, I'm surprised that they're so, so similar.
Yep. That's one of the things that surprises pretty much all of our school districts that we do this kind of work for. Their intuition tells them that alumni parents should be higher than non-parents, and that is intuitive in nature. What we've found out over many, many years and doing some studies around that is, the demographics of alumni parents tend to be kind of 55 to 65-ish, a lot of them, and many of them have graduates in college, which is expensive. Some of them have kids who have gone to college, graduated, and are back home again, you know, looking for work. Some of those 55 to 65-year-olds are gonna be looking at their 401K twice a week, wondering, "When can I retire?". And so, the short answer is that, that age demographic that is kind of pre-retirement, a lot of those folks are in that alumni group, and so it's pretty normal that non-parents are about the same as alumni parent, and quite commonly, the percentage of support from non-parents is higher than alumni parents. That's not unusual at all. So it doesn't, it doesn't have anything to do with looking back and, you know, not liking my experience of my children, it has more to do with economics and demographics. Good question.
Does it include private school?
Sure. Could be. All right, so we're continuing with the same type of information, so just to remind you, you're looking at, "How did people respond after they got information?". So on the left-hand side, you're seeing the male/female. Females are always more supportive than males, 100% of the time, everywhere, and it's really a matter of how much more. And typically, we do see somewhere around 8 to 12% higher. On the right, you're seeing support level based on age. This is also a fairly typical pattern. We normally see a little stronger support from the 18 to 54-year-old group compared to the other two. In your particular case, the, you did have good support from that 55 to 64 age group. Remembering, as you look at these, that the more you break them down, the smaller the number of people who actually were in that group that responded to the question. So it's interesting, it's helpful information, but don't necessarily make an assumption that that's going to apply to everybody in a particular age group. Here is the information on the left, based on geography, where, where do I live? And as I looked at the more detailed demographics that you don't have yet, comparatively speaking, Ward II and the outlying townships were relatively lower. That doesn't mean bad, it doesn't mean low, but relatively lower than the others. On the right, you're seeing how people responded based on their voting history, and what Baker Tilly did in this instance is, we looked at each person and said, "Out of the last nine times that you had a chance to vote, how many times did you actually vote?". Now, that could have been a presidential election statewide, it could be a school board. Out of the last nine, how many times did you cast a ballot? And people who are, who have voted in six, at least six out of nine are in the very active group, three to five are in the middle group, and zero to two are in the less and new. Remembering with less and new, that an 18-year-old who voted for the first time in November of 2020 is one out of nine. So it's a combination of new voters and people who just, for whatever reason, don't vote very often. On the left, you're seeing support after information, based on household income, and on the right, you're seeing support after information based on educational attainment. And the last one, I think, on the demographic slides, is support based on whether I own a home or I rent. And somewhat similar to what I said about the male/female, renters are always significantly more supportive than homeowners, and the reason, of course, is, I'm a renter now, and you don't necessarily connect the dots between a property tax increase and your rent, the same way you do as when you own a home. All right, so we went through and looked at level of support after information, and now we're to the third part of the feasibility survey, which focuses in on potential tax impacts on an average-priced home. Similar to what I said about the, the previous set of questions, the, these are also randomly ordered, so some people hear the, the biggest number first, others hear the smallest number, others hear the middle number first. And again, what we're trying to prevent is having someone sense that they're being taken up the ladder or down the ladder, and have that affect how they respond. And so this is the overall graph of all 400 interviews. From Baker Tilly's point of view, when we're working with a client and we see a graph like this, we're happy, and we're happy because the administration chose a range of potential tax impact that created, you know, scenarios where you can see some opportunity and success, you know, down the road. Compare that to a situation where a school district tests three different tax impacts and say has 70% opposition to the lowest number tested. That isn't good news, and it also isn't particularly helpful for planning. So we like to see that middle one kind of hovering around 50%, which tells us that a range was selected that was reasonable, and remember, as you look at these, that's, you've got that margin of error, plus-minus 5%, so that 51.2 could be 56, or it could be 46. This next slide is busy, but there is important information there, once you get your head around it. Here, again, we're looking at everybody. Here, we're saying, "Okay, what did people say who pretty much always vote?". That's the light green, so on this particular slide, it's the bottom line. Those are folks who pretty much always vote. That's the six out of nine or more. And then the other two lines that are just about on top of each other are the other two groups, so it's the group that does not vote frequently, and, and the group that gets there about half the time in combination. And this information can, can be important and helpful, depending on when you're gonna be on the ballot, is, is it gonna be a, a big turnout election or a smaller turnout, and different types of voters can impact those in different ways. The next block of questions in the survey asks folks to react to statements about the district and its funding, and in each case, again, people were saying, "If you knew that", in the case of that one at the top, "There's been $4 million of unfunded special education mandates in Hastings. If you knew that, would that make you more or less likely to support an increase in the operating referendum?". So similar to the other bar graph, you saw the 66 is adding up the people who said, "If I knew that, that would make me much more likely", and adding that to, to the people who said it would make me somewhat more likely. Conversely, the, the number you're seeing in the gold bar is taking the percentage of people who responded to the two negative options, either that would, knowing that would make me much less likely or somewhat less likely to be supportive. This is a Phi Delta Kappa Gallup question that we almost always include with our studies. It's been asked for 50 years, and it's basically saying, "You're the teacher for the day. Give your local public schools a grade, A, B, C, D, F", and this is how folks responded to that probe in Hastings. And we did a survey here a few years ago, and so as we looked at the data, we were also able to show you a comparison to what it looked like now compared to the last survey. We also were able to show you how you compare to the national sample, and again, that's the Phi Delta Kappa poll I mentioned. And so here's the slide that shows all three. The light green is how people responded to the survey in Hastings that we just did, and then the second one is, in the gray, is comparing it to five years ago, same question, and then the bottom one in the aqua, or whatever color that is, that's the national Phi Delta Kappa sample. And this one is apples to apples, because people who participated in the national survey were not grading the nation's schools, they were grading their local public schools, just like the people who responded to this in Hastings' most recent survey. And as you can see, you've compared very, very favorably, and, and the ratio of, you know, As and Bs to the, to the Ds and Fs were very, very good. Follow-up question, after people gave their grade, they were asked, "What's the main reason you gave the grade you, you did?". And you can see that the biggest percentage is there, including leadership and management of the district, academic standards, quality of instruction, and those were the three largest ones in terms of people who had an opinion. Don't be surprised on some of these, including this one, where you have a, you know, fairly sizable percentage that don't have an opinion, because about 80% of the interviews were done with non-parents. So you're always So you're always going to have that percentage. We also asked people to grade the financial management of the school district. Similar scale is what we looked at before. What we look at when we get the data back is we're looking at the ratio of positive to negative. People who were giving that A and B versus the D and F, and again, yours was very positive. And don't be surprised with the complexity of school finance, and 80% of the respondents not being parents of kids, that you've got a sizable chunk who just simply don't know or don't have an opinion.
Is that something you find commonly with surveys in other districts, too, that you get that chunk of people that just offer no opinion on that particular topic?
If you use the stratified methodology that Baker Tilly uses, which in layman's terms means if you set your targets before you start, and if 80% of registered voters are not parents, then roughly 80% of the calls go to non-parents, then you're going to get those higher percentages of don't know, no opinion. If you do the type of survey where 80% of your respondents are parents, you're going to see very, very different numbers, including lower percentages not having an opinion. So this is continuing with the financial management. Again, very positive ratio, almost five to one, more than five to one ratio of As to Bs versus Ds and Fs. Sorry, my thumb is moving to the wrong direction again. Okay. We also asked people to react to four statements, to see to what extent they agreed or disagreed with the statements. And you can look at them quickly as I'm introducing you to the next slide. And on the next slide, you're going to see the percentage of people who agreed and disagreed with those statements. So starting at the top, strong schools are linked to community well-being. That was at 92%, either strongly agreeing or agreeing with the statement. Then you've got similar information from the three that follow. Certainly, the top two out of the four resonated most strongly, kind of across the board. And then we also asked people to react to this statement. I would not vote for a tax increase, no matter what the amount or how the money used or raised would be used. Now, why do we ask that question? That question has been asked hundreds of times, and it's a measure of what we would call a tax capacity or tax threshold. It's a measure of climate. What's the climate within the district related to taxes? To give you an example, on the wrong end of where you don't want to be, we did this for a suburban district in Milwaukee, and had over 60% agree with the statement. That does not put you in a great place in terms of climate, as you could imagine. The normal is 15 to 25% agree with the statement. And so when we look at this particular pie chart, we always zero in what percentage agreed with the statement that they would not support any tax increase of any amount for any purpose. The normal, again, is 15 to 25, and at 16%, you're at the low end of the normal range. So you have a normal, healthy tax climate. We did ask this question five years ago, and you can see just quickly eyeballing the very, very similar results in 2022 as compared to 2017. We also had one section where we were evaluating where people got their information and where they want to get their information. And so we were looking at printed materials, word of mouth, and electronic sources. So we initially asked people, what was their primary source of information? You can see on this particular pie chart that 38% said print. And so once we collected that, then we went back to the people who said print, only the people who said print, and said, what print? And that's what you're seeing on this slide. So people who said print was my main source, it's your community newspaper was the primary source of information. From people who said word of mouth, we followed up with whose word, whose mouth? So again, on this one, you're only getting a response from the people who said word of mouth. Then the follow-up question is, who? And as you can see, families and friends was overwhelmingly the largest response, followed by teachers and staff. And then last, for those people who said, my primary source is electronic, again, we said, what electronic? And in this particular case, at 32% is what district email, if I'm seeing okay from this distance, and the 26 is other social media. And then there was a follow-up question, what source people would like to have moving forward in the future? How do I want to get my information in the future? And this breaks it down to text, email, website, social media, local news, and those other categories. And these can certainly help your communication professionals figure out who needs what kind of information and how to deliver it. And when you get into the second report, which you'll have shortly, it's the detailed report, you're going to be able to look at every question in the survey, and then say, what did 18- to 24-year-olds say? What did people from Ward II say? What did men say? What did women say? And so you'll have this broken down by demographic group as well, so you can see how retirees responded, for example, as compared to parents. In terms of summary slides, there was very, very strong support for renewing the existing levy with no tax increase. We normally see very high levels of support when there's no tax increase. As far as a possible increase in the future, it started a little tepid at that 42.7. However, when people got relevant information and some facts about it, it did substantially improve to that 56.9, which was a significant increase. This slide just reminds you of all the things we talked about with people, which ones resonated most positively, that's in that first bullet. Athletic programs, relatively speaking, was the lowest level of support. And then you can see that the positive reaction averaged 76% with a range of 62 to 84. And the negative reaction ranged from 11 to 29 with an average of 17. In terms of initial planning, looking forward, at the time we did our data collection, a tax increase of $135 per year tested as feasible. When we look more closely and peel the onion back on how different demographic groups were responded, we adjusted that down to 125. If you remember the chart, it showed that the most active voters were relatively less supportive of the tax increases. That's why that's adjusted down from the 135 to the 125. I wouldn't get too hung up on that number in April of 2022, and you're looking at possibly November of 2023, but it's a place to start with your planning. And that number can move up or down, depending on all kinds of circumstances, a lot of them playing out in the news every day. Relatively highest support came from parents, residents of wards one and four, renters, and voters with lower household incomes. Relatively lower support from over 65, folks living outside of the main wards, and household incomes in the range specified on this particular bullet. In terms of the budget gaps, remember there were four statements that were relevant to funding for the district? And on those, the range was from 59 to 66 on the positive side. Those were the people who, where those statements would convince them to be supportive. And then 25 to 29 on the negative side. We already talked about that 125 tax increase as a planning parameter for now. And changes in the final ballot proposal and all kinds of things that are going to happen between now and November of next year certainly have the potential to move that number up or down, depending on the circumstances. That is it. I mentioned to you that, I don't know what the timing is exactly, but the second report that we have produced is that detailed demographic report, where those of you who really like to peel the onion back and dig in. And then we also, probably by either tomorrow or Monday of next week at the latest, we'll have the summary of the open-ended questions that were in the survey. Rather than people picking A, B, C, or D, they answered your question. So that would be the third report that's coming soon.
While people are thinking about their question, I just want to take a second. The thing that hit me is when we compared this work, because Baker Tilly did do the surveys in 2017, and we look at, one, the grading of the district, and, two, people's perceptions of the district, both in an operational, in an instructional, and then a financial standpoint. And you think back to what has happened after 2017. In a couple instances, there were some significant district things that took place locally. We went through COVID. We went through a year of not having kids in a building, for the most part. And to get a response that grades the district as favorably as it did, really, I think, says a lot about our community as a whole, and needs to be a point of celebration for the community, for our teachers, and the staff that went into providing services for our kids. I think that's huge to see a minimal discrepancy between the change.
So true.
I agree with that. I think that that really kind of sets, I wish I could say I'm surprised, but I'm not, that we marked as high as we did, especially given the last few years. But what I've received from the community and feedback is that, hey, we get it, we know what is going on, it's awful for everybody, keep fighting the good fight. I guess what kind of stuck out most to me, and I'm trying to find it here, but not surprised about the southern townships, given that there are so many school options down there, and Hastings is a, it's a huge geographical district, too. So the options for students to go to, I was not shocked by that at all. I was pleasantly surprised about the tax aversion. Thank you for explaining that. I appreciate that.
As far as the geography goes, while every school district is different, I can tell you that it's pretty common for support to be relatively lower in outlying townships as compared to the kind of the central city or town. So that's quite common. Lots of different reasons, depending on the circumstances, but quite common.
Just to ask a question about that, I know, and honestly, I was surprised to see that the northern townships have moved into a maybe even statistically significant notable support of levies, which has not been the case in the past. But we've seen land use there start to shift, I've seen land use start to shift there, and we're moving to a residential type of approach, whereas our southern districts are significantly ag properties. I know there's been some state statutes in the last five years that have redistributed those costs a little bit, but that might just need to be part of our messaging, that it's not as, because if somebody owns thousands of acres, the idea of a property tax increase is really onerous. But I will say that the overarching positive messages in here, as I looked through this leading up to today, just like settled in my heart, and I'm looking at Ann right now thinking, you know, I want you to take this back, and I want teachers watching this, and I want staff, all our staff, to see how solidly, to Bob's point, the community continues to stand behind the schools and continues to see the work that we do as successful. And it's not the work that we do, it's the work that you guys are doing, it's the work that the staff is doing. And that puts us in a position to feel confident going out and continuing to ask for levies. That was my takeaway from today.
Well, if you have questions that come to you later, channel them through your superintendent, and Baker Tilly'd be happy to continue to provide more information and respond to questions as they come up. And good luck with your planning.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you for that, Don. If people need to take a quick break, we are right on time, but that'll give me time to set up our next presenter, Ms. Hazel Reinhardt. So I'll turn that over to you.
Yep, let's take five minutes, buy a break, and then allow a chance to set up and for us to be ready to rock and roll here in five. us to be ready to rock and roll here in five. Ms. Hadeen, could we see you at the table, please?
Yes, let's get my bio.
All right. So I know we got, we got done with a lot of numbers with our community survey, but what dovetails beautifully with that information is that we have Ms. Hazel Reinhardt here tonight, who has completed a demographics enrollment study for the district, which should give us another perspective on the ins and outs of some numbers that impact where we're headed in the next 10 or so years potentially. So Hazel, I welcome you, and turn the floor over to you.
Well, thank you. It's my pleasure to be here. And as I say to people, I usually have more enthusiasm for these numbers than people, than the listeners have, so I'll try to keep that in mind. Just a brief word of introduction. School attendance is compulsory. It is in every state, although the ages vary from state to state. Because it is compulsory and set by age, school enrollment becomes a subset, or school-age population is a subset of demography of the larger population. And as such, it reflects that population, and it reflects the trends that are occurring in that population. And then something that is another thing that people think about, and I'll touch on later, there is a relationship between housing and school population, but it is a complex one. And although first blush, it seems like it would be simple, but it really is not. And so we want to keep that in mind as well, because we tend to see new housing units, and we think we'll see more students. And increasingly, that is not the case. So with that said, I'll go to the first slide, because it's important, I think, for us to remember that we're in a very different projection environment than we would have been in even five years ago, but especially 10 years ago. And I just want to call out some of the things that are different and that are affecting enrollment projections today. One is that we're right now in a period of very low fertility, and that, by that, and its results are a low number of births. Births are decreasing in the United States and in Minnesota. Consensus among demographers is that the pandemic will result in even fewer births. And in 2020, U.S. births were the lowest since 1979. And of course, births translate into kindergarten kids five to six years later. So as we look toward the future, good idea to put it under our mindset that we're not likely to see much growth in kindergarten class size. Fertility rates vary by race, ethnicity. They're especially low among white, non-Hispanic women. We are having and experiencing less mobility. Most, until the last couple of years, since the Second World War, 20% or more of the U.S. population move, changed its address every year. Oh, yes. Oh, yes. That's right. Now, suddenly, it has changed, and we are at 8.4%. And the significance of that, of course, is that people are staying in place far more so. And we constantly think something's going to turn over. It's going to turn over. It's going to turn over. Well, it turns over, but painfully slowly. So that's something else to keep in mind. The population is aging. That's something we've heard so much about. It's now rather boring, but it is here upon us, and it results in a smaller percentage of households with school age, or children, school-age children. Lower density, if you will, of kids in the neighborhood. Everybody looks back on their youth, and there were lots of kids in their block, and so on and so forth. No longer the case. And it's also driving the demand for a different mix of housing, so that you're seeing more town homes, more 55-plus, more continuum of care, all of that sort of thing. And the significance of that is that it's single-family detached units that have the highest yield per unit of school-age children. So don't allow yourself to be distracted by these other. Always look for single-family detached. Okay? And then immigration from abroad has slowed, and this is a major source of population growth for Minnesota since about 1987. It was a major source of school-age children, and that's not going to be the case for the next few years. I don't know what will happen longer term. And then Minnesota's back to a pattern of net out migration, and that is that we have more people leave the state every year than move to it. And that's a long historic pattern in Minnesota, broken from about 1987 to, oh, 2005, 10, when switched, but now we're back to this, this old pattern. You might see columns about this in the newspaper and the like. So that's it. We're in a different environment. And then, of course, we have the COVID-19 effects. And I want to just say right now that you had, you were less affected by the disruption than almost any other metro school district. You weathered it unbelievably well. In Minnesota, we know that it had a pretty substantial impact. Kindergarten classes were smaller, and those, because kindergarten, you don't have to attend kindergarten in Minnesota. Kids were, we use the term redshirted. They were held at home, didn't attend any school, or parents decided to homeschool them, or maybe send them to a private school, parochial school, if there was one nearby that had capacity. The other elementary grades, one through five, also lost students to homeschools or private schools. Middle school and high school enrollment was less affected. I'm talking here statewide. To give you a sense on homeschooling, we were running at about 20,000 students in the state being homeschooled. Before the pandemic, it jumped to 30,000 in a single year, and has not fallen back. So I don't know what the longer term of that will be. As your superintendent said quite succinctly, it'll last until the math outstrips the parent's ability. So I think that you will see students back in, at the middle school years and certainly the high school years. But you may have, you won't feel it, but statewide, I think we will. Now, in your case, your enrollment was decreasing before the pandemic, and there was absolutely no evidence that the pandemic accelerated any enrollment decrease. And its impact, the pandemic impact was very, very mild here. You had a net out migration of 44 students after a long history of net in migration that affected most grades, and some across the board affect. But when you look at that against your enrollment, it's very, very small. There are districts that had 5% to 10% of their enrollment disappear in the pandemic. Your 2020-21 kindergarten class was down about 20 students. That's what we would have expected if the same ratio of the kindergarten pool had been met. 2021, also down about 20 students. So you're a little, little short maybe on kindergarten, but otherwise, K4 lost 23 students to net out migration, very, very small. So I would say you weathered that, and we don't have to make a lot of adjustments for that. If we look at what happened to those students, primarily went to our being homeschooled and no return at this point. Charter enrollment increased a little bit, but decreased this year. So that did not, did not continue to hold students. Opening enrollment out of the district increased by 15 students was just so minimal that, I think, so I'd say it's homeschool is where those kids that have been, have been lost Here, I'm going to look at the Hastings Public Schools compared to Minnesota as a whole. This is for the year 2020-21, which is the most recent year the state has data for. Just to give you a sense of, the number of students you have in school is a function both of the population, but also of student choice. And we have a lot of choice in Minnesota and publicly funded choice. The top set looks at non-public settings, and you can see that, that, you're very, very close here to the state averages. About the same percent homeschooled, and just slightly more in traditional, non-public schools, parochial schools here, where you are significantly less than the state as a whole is in open enrollment. 9% of all students enrolled, students in Minnesota K-12 are open enrolled. Not talking only about public, I'm talking across the board. And you have 2.3% in, 6.5 out. Charter schools, 6.8% of all students in Minnesota, you're 1.8. And then that means that your market share, 79.6%, basically 80% compared to 73% statewide. So you have a very solid market share. Let's take a look now on what's happened in the past 10 years. I always want to caution people that trends are not a one or two-year thing, so we need to look at a longer period of time. And I'm looking here at 10 years, and as you can see, in that 10 years, you've had, each year, year over year, you've had enrollment decline of about 11.5%, 532 students. Non-residents make up 2.3% of your total enrollment, and that is a very low percentage today in Minnesota. And it's a low percentage, I think, just because you're surrounded by some really big districts that, that are effective. And then the river can't cross that. So you don't have much opportunity to, to get non-residents, but this makes you somewhat different from most metro school districts. Resident enrollment decreased as well, and the district's school-age population decreased. And that's an indication of the district's population aging. So, and of course, you cannot get, get kids if there are no kids to be had.
Just for my clarification on that third bullet, then, that's the entire district school-age population?
Yes.
Students that are choosing parochial homeschool?
Everything.
Every, every school-age child that you are aware of?
Yes.
Across the board, just, that number's just down?
That's down.
Regardless of their choice?
That's right.
All right. Thank you for your clarification.
It's down. Here, I'm just showing you enrollment numbers, and you can see that as enrollment, total enrollment went down, resident enrollment went down, and non-resident enrollment peaked around 2017, 18, and has drifted down since then. This table is an important one to understand what's going on, and something that demographers like to, to look at. The left columns, look, you're over here, at the change in enrollment and the percentage. And then the natural increase/decrease column is a measure of the difference between the kindergarten in the fall compared to the previous year's grade 12. So it's like a comparison of births and deaths. Okay? And if the number is a positive one, it's natural increase. That means you had more incoming kindergarten students than you graduated out seniors in the spring. And if they're negative, you graduated out more students than you have coming in. And you can see that you've had a negative number every year in the past 10 years, and that cost you 799 students. And that is something you can't do anything about. I mean, it just means, that's again, an issue of the population and the fact that the school-age population was declining. And that is what's driving, drove your enrollment down in the past 10 years, and it's going to continue into the next 10 years. We'll talk about that, and that puts a real damper on enrollment. And as you can see, then, if we look at net migration, you had more people moving into the district as a school-age population than left and enrolled in, in the Hastings Public Schools. So that gave you 267 students, and the combination of the natural increase/decrease in the net migration is the change.
I'm going to ask this question, and I think it's for the good of the group, although it's definitely for my own personal good, too. When you say net migration in children, school-age children moving into the district, you do not mean always families physically moving into a house in the district? You mean a child that maybe had previously been homeschooled or charter schooled or parochial schooled?
Right.
Enrolling into Hastings Public School?
Yes.
Those have been, with, with the exception of 1920, those have been, and then one in the 10 years ago, have been positive numbers?
So if you want to think about it, that is, in some ways, a reflection of the housing growth you've had. Okay? But you have been fighting this, this battle that your graduating classes are always so much larger than your incoming kindergarten classes. Function of declining fertility, aging of the population. Here, I'm, I'm just have displayed the enrollment and just point out a couple of things that I look at. I look at that kindergarten line very carefully, and we'll see, I also look at it against a pool. I also look at the rightmost column, and here we can see, and we'll see this, that your elementary grades are on average smaller than your middle school and high school grades. Now, you have some net inflow that makes some difference, but it's, it's again, an indicator that enrollment is likely to continue to decline. And then if you go on the diagonal, that's how the migration is calculated. So we had 337 kindergarten students in 2011, 12, and that became 243, I mean, 343, 343, 333, 327, 335, 349, 352, 345, 406, 372. So it just gives you a sense of how that's, that's calculated. Now, let's turn our, our thoughts to the future, although these, these numbers are in the past. These are resident births. Resident births have a very specific meaning, and that means that on the birth certificate, the mother provided information that allows that birth certificate to be coded to county and place that she claims to be her residence. Has nothing to do with where the child was born. Okay? Okay? And you can see here from Minnesota that we are seeing this decline in the number of resident live births, and especially in the last couple of years. And you can see the decline in Dakota County. And that is really an indication of the, the aging of this population as it went from, from the suburban development of the 70s, 80s, 90s, 2000, whatever, to becoming empty nested primarily. It's not that it has such a huge population over 65, but it's no longer in childbearing years. So, and the significance of that, of course, is that I have to look for some proxy for, I'm going to project kindergarten, and I'm going to use those births. Births are reported on a calendar year basis. I'm going to adjust them for, for the child to be age five on September 1st, which I then call the kindergarten pool. And this table shows you the percentage that your kindergarten is of that Dakota County pool. Now what's interesting to me about this is that until we got to 2020-21, those percentages are moving, they always move, but in a very, very narrow range. That, that in fact, what's happening in the county as a whole, which is large, and what's happening in, to your kindergarten are very closely related to each other. And then as you can see, we had a drop in that percentage in 2020-21. But the greater mystery is why the drop again in 21-22. So the share of the Dakota County pool fluctuated, always does. I'm then looking at what, what might be something that moves forward. So I did some averages here, average of the nine years prior to the pandemic year. I always call 20, 2020-21, the pandemic year. That average was 5.43%. If I look at the average of the five years prior to the pandemic year, it's 5.40. If I look at the average of the three years before the pandemic year, it's 5.40. So you can see that these numbers have, are very near each other. So based on that, I made the decision to use that 5.43 average of the nine years prior to the pandemic as the low kindergarten assumption. And I chose the 5.64 as the highest ratio, which happened to be the highest ratio in the past 10 years as a high, because I wanted to give some opportunity for some growth, some change maybe in the county numbers. And this was a way of, of doing it, is to allow for a slightly larger kindergarten projection. Now, these two percentages are, are very similar, but they do produce a small difference in, in kindergarten projections. At the longer term, we see what's happening. In the past 15 years, Dakota County resident births have decreased from 8.44 to 7.84 of Minnesota resident births. And so I took the five-year average with 7.63 and moved that forward because I have to project going forward. This, of course, is the, is the most sobering set of numbers. These are projected zero-year-olds for the state of Minnesota made by the Minnesota Demographics Center. They've over-projected that number now for three consecutive years. So I have an adjusted number to the right, which is 93.8%. But any way you look at this, these numbers are unbelievably flat. And in fact, the numbers going forward all the way to 2050 don't show much lift.
Just to ask for clarification on the adjusted number? That's a percentage that, that you selected based on their historical success at accurate projection?
They're now at nine point, they're, they're, they differ from, from actual by 93. Their, their projection was 93.8%. So the reverse would be what, six points, something? And the gap, the gap increased every year. So I took that percentage, I assume for Dakota County, created a projected kindergarten pool for Dakota County. What I want to call your attention to here is how much larger the pool for 2021-22 was compared now to what we're looking at. And in the bold are those are children already born. But you can see that, that numbers are, are just not going up. And then the 5.43 and the 5.64 multiplied against that pool. And I'm projecting then future kindergarten, one at 282 and the other at 293. So while the percentages are very similar, they do make a little bit of difference. And then I look at that compared to the number of kindergarten students you had in the past 10 years. You had 2,844 kindergarten students in the past 10 years. That high projection is at 2,861, which is virtually identical. The other one is a little lower. So it gives you a sense of, of how similar, how different it is. Here's the net migration we looked at, and what I'm calling out in the bold numbers here is that you get a rather nice inflow at grade nine. And the numbers are actually quite large. This last year, 82, before 61. I don't know what happened way back when, when only 20 came, but you can see it's a, it's a large number that flows in. And then you will see between grades eight, I mean, nine and 10, you have a net outflow that is, that is fairly typical in Minnesota public high schools. What I always remind people is if you could alter that, your high school enrollment would be higher. So I don't know whether these students are dropping out. There are not, there are not a lot of choices for them to attend high school elsewhere. And I don't, some, some may have, families may have moved, but that's something I would always keep my eye on. And we can see where the, if you were, where the risk is. It's in that transition from grade nine to 10 and 10 to 11. Once they make it to 11th grade, they're likely to remain. And that's, as I say, this is not unique to you, but it's something that I like to have schools be aware of and focus on. Some districts put considerable effort into keeping people in school and getting them graduated through the traditional system. So something to, to think about. And because as we look in the future, it's your high school enrollment that's going to plummet. So it might be, might be worth, the dollars they represent, to be so crass, might be worth looking at. And now here I've simply aggregated this net migration so we can look at elementary. And as you can see, with the exception of one other year, and then this pandemic year, you always have a net increase due to migration at the elementary level. And basically at the middle school level as well. It is at the high school level, which we saw in the individual grades. So these are raw numbers. That same phenomena can be put into percentages. 1.000 means that the same number of students are in the next higher grade the following year. Among school-aged children, death is, is very minimal. So, so that basically it represents movement. Again, I highlight the eight to nine. You can see here I've looked at, I'm trying to find something that, that might be a predictor going forward with the pandemic, with even this past year, it's a little more difficult. So what I've done here is taken the three years prior to the pandemic, plus the most recent year. That turns out actually to produce a slightly lower projection than simply looking at the three years prior to the pandemic. And you can see the small differences as they come up through it. And then I test this out by using a low kindergarten assumption. So this means the number of kindergarten students I'm adding in is constant. And I look at these two migration and what difference they make. And you can see it's not a very big difference. And the differences is almost nonexistent at the elementary level. And it, a little more at the middle school, middle school grades. It's not really your middle school, but your middle school grades. And then 912. So we can get a sense of, of that. And then, as I say, we take these assumptions I've made, we marry them, and we get projections. And in 10 years, I'm projecting that your enrollment will decrease from the 4,076 to either 3862 to 4,046. The highest projection being basically a flat enrollment. Kindergarten projected to be smaller in the previous year's grade 12, that natural decrease, net in-migration to continue. This is what the numbers look like with the marriage of these assumptions. And the way these numbers, the gradation of these numbers, it tells us is the kindergarten assumptions are making a bigger difference in the variation of these four than the migration assumptions. And then we want to get on to how this shakes out in, in how you have your schools organized. And then I've done the arithmetic here. And big point, it's almost, I wouldn't say unique, but you're in a small category. You have a net increase projected for K4. And you have a decline. We look at the first five years because, basically because children are born, so in the effect on, on the elementary. You have a decrease of students at the middle school grades and at the high school. And then the first five years, then you can see the second five years, or we're looking at it here at the full 10 years. Again, you have an increase over the next decade. You'll see you'll get the biggest bump in it in the first five years because those births were a little higher than we're projecting. But in 10 years, anywhere from 33 to 96, basically 100 more K4 students with a decline at the middle school. And then look at the 10-year projection, up to, close to 200 fewer students at the high school. Now what we have to remember is the, the assumptions on births in kindergarten have almost no impact on high, those high school projections 10 years out because only two years are projected in there based on births. The other two are already born. this is an interesting sort of picture here of growing elementary decline at middle school and high school.
For my own clarification, the assumptions on enrollment projections on this particular slide are lower high kindergarten?
They just, they take it from the lowest to the highest. So it gives you the range.
On the, on the previous, on the one that was up there before? On the next slide?
Yeah. Okay.
Oh, this is, okay, I see what you're saying. So the plus 60 is the low, and for example?
Yeah.
And the plus 127 is the high?
So it's in that range?
It's the range from high to low?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
So elementary growth, middle school, high school decline. Now what could make these projections too high, too low? Well, too high, the projected kindergarten is too high. Probably not. Certainly not the low kindergarten projection. More students choose other education options. They don't have a lot of choices, but you never know. Too low, the projected kindergarten is too low. Again, I think the, I don't think the high projection would be too low on kindergarten, but we'd have to see an overall increase in number of births. More students enroll into the district, that is, you give a little, a few more non-resident students. Or residential development is faster than projected and has more families with children. That's, that's the key. From, from a school's point of view, you know, you tend to want kids. Or you want something that greatly increases your tax base. So relationship between housing and the K-12. Unit type, and I've done this work in four states. Minnesota, Illinois, Wisconsin, and Colorado is very consistent, very, very consistent. Unit type affects school age, a child per unit. With single-family detached producing the most children per unit. Newer units, brand-new units produce more students than older ones. Single-family units, when they sell, if they're new, the unit, per unit yield goes up. If they're older, more often than not goes down. Market value affects it. And interestingly, people think affordable housing, whatever that means, will produce more kids. Actually, it's, it's moderately, and in many places, the highest-priced housing produces the most kids. Oh, yeah. And then senior units, of course, no students. And everyone thinks that senior units are going to be filled with people who live in the community. And my experience has been that seniors come from all over because maybe your child lives here and, and you say to mother, "I really want you to move to Hastings. There's a new facility there, and you could be near me," and so on and so forth. So they, they, yeah. What I'm trying to say is you, it, it could be faulty logic to say, "We're going to have this many senior units, and that's going to open up X number of single-family homes." Not necessarily.
What's considered new versus old housing? Because you're talking about new units versus old. What's the cutoff? Built, oh, just this year?
Yeah, this year, last five years.
I thought you were going to give us at least some wiggle room.
Yeah.
This year, huh? Okay.
It depends. When I look at this, I look at what the rate of growth has been in a district that's had very rapid growth. Maybe new units are, are two or three years old. Okay? Some others, it's, it's less. But yes, it's new units. And the significance of, of new units is that they tend to have all the bells and whistles that people are looking for. You know, what's the floor plan? Is it an open floor plan, which I understand is now becoming a little less popular? But it says open versus small rooms. You know, does the kitchen have an island? What do the bathrooms look like? All of that sort of thing. So the new units tend to, to meet what people are looking for at the moment. Walk-in closets, owner's suite, all of that sort of stuff. You know, if you have a house built in 1955 or 1960, it may be perfectly, maybe better constructed, but it doesn't have the floor plan you want, or something else. So that's what, what affects, affects that. And then I'm looking here, because I'm going to get to a projection here. You have approved or under construction, 86 single-family detached, 72 villa homes. And while they're not technically townhomes, they're going to behave like town, out-town homes. Apartments, 50 units, and 165 senior units. And then on proposed development, which should come on unless construction costs and interest rates really go through the roof, which will slow things down. Another 175 single-family detached, another 18 villa- another eighteen villas, three hundred apartment units. Okay? Now, based on the work I've done in all of these school districts, the single-family detached K-12 yield varies by school district and by attendance area within a school district. Recent K-12 yield for new units in Dakota County is zero point five five. Okay? Fifteen years ago.
That's not a very big number.
Fifteen years ago, when I was doing this in, for example, in Lakeville, there would be some new developments that might actually average one school per, one school-aged kid per, per unit. Not seeing anything close to that anymore. So, and, and then I want to make this clear. That's at the time it's occupied. What it looks like four or five years later, we don't know because we don't know whether there are preschool kids in that home and we don't know whether there will be children born in that move. But that's what it's immediately. So that, that would vary. But I think the point, zero point five five for you is, is pretty reasonable based what I've seen here in Dakota County. The townhome yield is very consistent across all school districts across the state, zero point two-two. So those villas are not going to do very much. Apartments, again, very consistent across all school districts across the state, zero point one-one to zero point one-five. In other words, you need ten units to get one kid. Now, the thing, the one thing to remember about this is that, I think I have one, yeah, I have one here. So from this, what's approved under construction, I think you'll have forty-seven students. They should be for you because this zero five five is based on what I think for the Hastings Public Schools, twenty-six, five, eight, zero. And then you see potentially ninety-six in these proposed developments more. So, okay. Now, the tricky thing of this is our natural instinct is to say, "Okay, I want to add those kids to my cohort survival projections." And I'm saying, "No, you can't really do that because we've made assumptions in here on, on the kindergarten lifting that a little bit. And it has, in the migration rates, some past development." So we can't just add it. Now, we can do a lot of teasing around with this. If you, if this was really an issue of you were thinking, "Do I have to add a classroom? Or do I want to build a new school?" or whatever, then it would be worth plotting it out and aging students out and the whole thing. In your case, I don't think it's worth that extra work. You'll probably pick up some of these students as additional students. The other thing to remember is they're not all going to be in school at the same time. They'll spread out over the, the grades and how that development occurs. In single-family detached, you will get probably more elementary students than middle school or high school students. Apartments will probably run younger and because they're likely to turn over, they'll probably always be young as opposed to aging out. And then, as I mentioned, preschool children are, are not counted in this. So with that, just to summarize, we've had, you know, a decade of declining enrollment driven by the fact that your incoming kindergarten classes are smaller than your graduating seniors the previous spring. That's going to continue. You have a net in migration. That is, that there's development that brings people to school or, or people are making changes, although you don't have many, many kids at other options when all is really said and done. So as we look to the future, growth in elementary, K-four, decline in middle school, decline in high school.
Hazel, one thing related to that we talked a little bit about, and it's always the question, is given our geographics on the south side, you know?
Ah, yes.
We've got the, the families that always go to Randolph schools.
Yeah, you supply about half of Randolph's enrollment.
Can you speak? Because what?
No, you do.
And this is why, the reason I'm asking here is I asked Hazel the same question was, how do we, do we expect any change out of that at all in terms of the fact that we are where we are?
I would not expect any change. Now, that doesn't mean that you shouldn't promote the quality and, and what you have to offer. Okay? And especially your high school. Because the option is between a very small high school and sort of average-sized high school in Minnesota, which it provides an opportunity for a far broader course offering, far more extracurricular activities and the like. Some people prefer, prefer the larger high school and what it offers. Others prefer the smaller, you know, everybody knows everybody very well. There also may be, people tend to go to school where they identify as well. And these people may not identify with Hastings. And hence, it's, it's not. What I have observed in Minnesota with open enrollment now because it's been in effect for some period of time, yeah, more and more students are open enrolling every year. The percentage keeps on going up, is that it has rationalized school district boundaries. And we know the school district boundaries came about for all kinds of idiosyncratic reasons. That a given farmer, a landowner, made a decision at the point at which the state said you have to belong to a school district, made a decision probably based on property taxes to be a part of one district or another without any sense. This was all open land, whatever. Now people, this is being developed, residential, and it doesn't make as much sense because maybe another district has a school within three, four, you know, nearby, closer to you. So I would say probably not. Probably not. But that shouldn't stop you from saying, you know, touting the quality of what you have to offer. But people make decisions on identity or who you want to be identified with. I see this very commonly in Austin, Albert Lee, Red Wing. There's kind of a town country sense. I thought that, you know, ended in nineteen fifty, but it hasn't. So that's probably another part of it, in a sense. But, no, I'd, I'd focus on can I, can I keep more of my high school students in high school? Everyone's very somber.
This is fantastic. I thank you so much for coming and presenting today. It's, it's a lot to take in. And so I'm just soaking it all in. And it's going to take a little bit for me to process it and figure out, "Okay, we got some, a little bit of work to do." But there, you know, considering all the different variables that, that come into enrollment, it's, it's a lot to take in. Yeah.
Are there any other questions for Hazel?
No, just thank you for coming in. It definitely highlights the importance of making sure we are, you know, making sure spending time focusing on whatever does these kids need because that's going to be the way to keep them, right? Is we got to make sure we're focusing on them, putting our attention on them. So it's, it's good to know. It's helpful.
Well, thank you, Hazel. Appreciate you coming in and sharing this information and the work you've done for us.
My great fear is that I won't find my way out.
I will ask Ms. Subert to maybe walk you out so you know where you're going. So with that, that, I don't know where you want to go aboard chair as far as remaining points tonight, but those are the two presentations for tonight. I know there's been some questions that have been brought up about, you know, contracts that we sign for, why do we, why do we bring people in to do this? And, and I think our two presentations tonight are example of the why. Both, both Hazel and Don tonight are considered experts in their field. For me strategically, it's a way to give the board some very significant information that can help you process through what makes sense to do next and maybe the why. And even opens up some opportunities to ask some related questions. But at the, at the end of it, I, I believe it creates a new baseline of how do we want to attack this, right? How do we want to attack the next two years, four years, five years? And if you'll think back, there, there is again some strategy to this because we're trying to get ready to do our long-range planning, which is going to try to attempt to get us what makes sense in the next five years for sure. But then what's a vision look like for ten years? And I don't know how you do that if you don't have this base of information that stems from what's our community think? How does that compare to what the community has thought in the past? What does our enrollment truly look like? And where's it coming from or where's it going? And where might be entry points for us to align some resources as we think about middle school program review and high school program review? So I'm hoping that as we're doing these presentations, you kind of have an insight into why I'm bringing this stuff or recommending to bring this stuff for you and the timing behind it.
Yeah, just to jump on that point, I mean, I think the complexity of running, again, a sixty-million-dollar annual system that reaches students from essentially birth to, to death with community education, preschool, and then the standard school-age care. We need experts to come in and provide these, you know, I work with this every day kind of data. To hear Hazel say, you know, "This is typical, this is atypical." We might hear stories that say, "We were strongly affected by COVID." "Oh, I have all of these anecdotal pieces." And then the first thing she says is, "You were so mildly affected by COVID compared to all the other districts in the metro." To get that expertise is, is invaluable. So I, I appreciate that, that those are the reach outs when we're saying, "This is how we want to run the district. This is, these are the things that we care about." That the administration is going to go find the person that can best provide that, that data and that perspective. I got the same feeling when Ellers presented at our finance meeting, committee meeting, that said, "All right, here's somebody that's working across Dakota County that can provide us perspective and context." Right out of the gate, first day they sit down at the table.
And you're going to be tasked with difficult decisions in near future and beyond, right? And you, you do have constituents that are on any side, any variable of any issue. And all we can try to do is give you information that is just the information so that you can, you can think about it, you can process it, you can ask each other questions about it and try to build a, a reason why you might want to move in direction X on something or not move.
Well, on that point too, so last night I started the Phase Four MSBA training and the big focus was on community engagement. And one of the things that they really kind of honed in on is it's not just about the students, it's also about the community and educating the community so we can take these, these statistics, this information, and provide that to our constituents so that they understand kind of where, where we sit as a community too. So this is, this is really helpful because it's not just my opinion or, you know, anybody else's opinion. This is actual data, real life, this is what's going on.
So I have two pieces of information if you would want to take with you before you go in. So Don referenced the detailed community survey stuff. So I printed out hard copies so you could look at it and you can see the actual questions that were given and then the details. We'll post this stuff, like we've done in the past for some work sessions, on the website afterwards. But Don wanted to make sure that he could go through his presentation because in the past, he said if he gives this up to the board prior, he never gets through his presentation. So I have them, I have both that ready to go. And then I also have a printed hard copy of Hazel's enrollment just in case you didn't print it out and you only have it electronically. That way you can scribble all over it if you need to. But they're big documents, it's a lot of data. And so you have hard copies of it, so I can give you those before you take off. But that's all I had for tonight.
That's great. No, it's, it's a lot, it's a lot to absorb. Some of it's kind of little, little somber. But, you know, we get the information out to community, let them know where everything's at, let them know how, how their neighbors are thinking and what's going on. And all these things are relative to what we need to do to make sure we're thriving the best we can, even if, you know, enrollment's going to be where it's going to be. We work hard on that, so keep working at it. I guess that's it. All right, folks, that's it. And have a great weekend. It's a holiday weekend, so hopefully you're spending some time with your family, getting some good food and getting some downtime over the four days that we've got off. So enjoy.